I'd like to call the meeting to order if you would stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Good to see you everyone and good to have everyone watching at home. Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll.
Trustee Carter.
Present.
Trustee Mariscal.
Present.
Trustee Kazam.
Present.
Trustee Gett.
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Present.
Trustee DeBoer.
Present.
Okay, we would be at item four, approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting on July 21st, 2020. I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We would be at announcements, just a couple of announcements, and I know Trustee Kazam's going to get into this later on in her report. We're going through the House Levine Comprehensive Plan for the Village. We encourage your participation there. We want everyone's participation as we continue to discuss fire and welcome your input. And also, I think Beth is going to talk about census, so please make sure, we encourage everyone to fill out everything related to the census. Next, we would be at comments from the audience. If you'd like to address the board, please come forward to the podium and give your name and address if you would, and try and keep your remarks to five minutes or less. So, welcome, yes.
Jeanette Hillier, 800 East Marietta, Peoria Heights. I'm here, as others are, because of the discussion on the fire department. I will keep this short because I plan on coming back after I hear what you have to say tonight and every night to go on. I will begin by saying, in all transparency, I am related to the chief. I thank you all for the time you're taking to study this. I realize the importance, as our village grows, so must our fire department. We have an excellent chief, we have great volunteers. I hope you listen to the chief. I've basically heard what has been said before, and again, I will wait until I hear your discussion to make further comments, but again, I do appreciate the time you give. I'm well aware of the time it takes to be a village trustee, and I also thank our firefighters and Chief Walters for the work they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. Good to see you here tonight. Who else? Okay, Mark?
Mark Bean, past president of Peoria Heights Suburban Lions Club. I'm here to ask for two things. As you've probably all had time to see the collection box that we put together, we're asking to have permission to install that out on the curb line where the mailbox presently is in the collection box. And the second thing I have is that we have repartners with the Peoria Blind Center, and we're having a White Cane Safety Day. It's a national holiday, October 15th, and we're asking to use the park from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. on that afternoon. We're going to have a couple little games set up, and we're going to take a little walk with the patrons. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else? Yes, sir, come on. Scott, I think that's you.
Yes.
All right. Hard to tell around with glasses and masks, but welcome, Scott, and welcome, gentlemen.
I'm going to take this off so you can verify it's actually me, if that's okay. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Scott Corsat. I'm the commander of the American Legion Post 1111 here in Peoria Heights, and we're here this evening for a special recognition. Just wanted to let you know of one thing coming up real briefly. We are going to have Armed Forces Celebration Day again this year, a much shortened down version this year. It'll be in October, so it won't be 1,000 degrees out, which will be nice. It will be back at Poor Brothers in the afternoon, and the beneficiary will be Freedom Service Pause Foundation, a local group that provides service dogs at no charge to veterans and first responders alike. So, we'll keep you informed on that as we approach that date.
Thank you so much for bringing that to the Heights. If there's anything you need from us, contact Chief Sutner or myself.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. So what we're here tonight for is to recognize the men and women of the Peoria Heights Police Department. We just felt it was our own small way to recognize your sacrifices for what you do for the community, for us as veterans, and it was just a small way to say thank you. Over the years, we've utilized you for things like parades, and when we did the Veterans' Day Parade, which is another subject, Mr. Mayor, I know you and I have talked about, but bringing that back maybe, to marching and parades. Matthew here and I have walked behind many police cars and carried the flags, and we've never got hit by another car, so they do a great job, so thank you for that. And then one time, a couple years ago, we hosted Congressman LaHood here at Village Hall, and at that time, there was a lot of unrest with security around Congressman. A couple had been shot, and I called Chief Sutton, and he was nice enough to provide us with a police officer that Saturday afternoon, so it just goes on and on. We just wanted to say thank you. So I do have a certificate of recognition to present to you, chief. It reads the following. "The American Legion Department of Illinois Certificate of Recognition Presented to Peoria Heights Police Department, Peoria Heights, Illinois. In special recognition and sincere appreciation from the General Wayne Downing, American Legion Post 1111, Peoria Heights, Illinois, for your dedication to veterans and the citizens of Peoria Heights. We salute you as we all continue to serve God and country. Presented this 18th day of August 2020. Salute. Attest Scott Corsat, Post Commander; Matthew Barnes, Post Vice Commander; and Thomas Hortman, Post Adjutant." And just real quick with me tonight, I've got Matthew Barnes, our Post Vice Commander. He's an Air Force veteran. Hunt Wagstaff, an Army veteran, and past Commander Bob Barbier, a Navy veteran. And I'm a Marine Corps veteran.
Well, could I ask everyone to join me in giving the Peoria Heights Police Department a standing ovation?
Thank you, Board, residents. This means a lot to me and the entire Police Department. You guys are always great, but you know, I would like to thank everybody over the last few months. These have been trying times for all law enforcement. We've had a huge level of support locally, not only from the residents, but also the business owners, the Board. You guys have always been great, so on behalf of our entire department, we say thank you very much. We appreciate it, and that will go up at the department, and they'll be excited to see that.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Can I walk this up to you?
All right. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the Board? Comments going once, going twice? Comments from the audience are closed. We'll move on to trustees' report. The first is Trustee Carter, Public Works. Cheryl?
Thank you. Actually, I don't think we have anything. I do just want to state again about how beautiful our flowers are. They look tremendous. I love them, and I get so many compliments about how our flowers look this year, so they're doing a fantastic job. Got some areas that I think the next year we probably need to focus on, but we can talk about that later. But I don't think, Mike, you don't have anything on the streets, right? Or do you?
Lake Street's up sale-culting today, so Columbus, Constantine Millard, below-the-dill Longshore Park, and Parkland San Antonio. We did do that, finished today, so that worked. Going to get you to the asphalt workers shortly.
Other than that, I don't think we don't have anything.
I know it's not your jurisdiction, but have you heard anything from Peoria about Lake Street?
We're going to cover, yeah, we'll cover that here in a minute. I have one thing for Public Works. I just have one thing for Public Works. You want to, Mike, would you like to touch on what we've done for the Lions Club? I know last time we had a board member here talking about the safety of Lions Park, and I think you were very, the Public Works guy.
Yeah, we kind of, good neighbor type person. We went down, they had the old wooden playground that was falling apart and stuff, so we went down, and Mrs. Slank and Mr. Slank and Lion Mark Bean here had told us about it, and he actually went down and fixed it a couple times, but it's just, it was in bad shape, so we tore it down and hauled away for him and saved their sliding boards for him, so now I feel comfortable, and I know Mark does, with nobody getting hurt because you could almost fall through them. So we did tear that down for them, so just a good partnership and working with the Lions Club.
Thank you, Mike. Mike, while you're there, and if it's okay with Trustee Carter, I know Trustee Weisenberg wanted to bring up an issue tonight, but if you and Mark Walton would report on this, it would be an understatement to say that I have been very, very upset and impatient with the construction work on Lake Street, and last week I asked you and Dave and Mark to get actively involved in that. So would you and Mark update everyone what's going on?
Mark, first.
So, at the Mayor's request, I communicated directly with Illinois American Water, including their attorney, expressing our dismay at what has happened on Lake Avenue, and lo and behold, Mike's going to report to you, it started to happen, and oh, we're going to get that done right away. So I think it's something that, you know, they ignored until it was raised to the right level, which is not the way things should have to happen, but in this case, it did, and I think, you go ahead and tell them.
Yeah, pretty much our main, well, is inconvenience because you have to go around through neighborhoods, but they fail to realize when they send them through our neighborhoods, they're tearing up our streets, they're making inconvenience for our residents, and you get people through there all hours of the night, and you don't know who they are, so that's a bad thing, and it just seems like, and Dave reached out to Illinois American a few times, I did about 20 times, never got no response, but you had them working, but you had PIPCO putting the main in, and you had Illinois American putting some pits in, it just seemed like on and on. Well, that's a main route for crying out loud. We got GP Transit buses and trucks going through our neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods. So I was frustrated, the Mayor was frustrated, Dustin was frustrated, so we got Mark involved and took some action, but now, today, I can say it's all blacked out, so hopefully in the morning, it's open. So it is all closed in, so, but.
And that promise says to be open tomorrow, I believe it.
Yeah, it should be in the morning, yeah, so that's, huh?
I'll be calling every day.
You'll be calling in the morning? I'll be around there, Jeff, but yes, but that was the big frustration of the whole thing, so even GP Transit, when they went up Boulevard, would hit the bottom of their buses going up to Scioto, so they had to go up to Illinois now and tear that up to get to Scioto, so it was a long, long process. We weren't happy, but now they did fill it in, so.
Any questions on that?
I have some, but I'll wait to miscellaneous business.
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
If that's okay. I'll wait until miscellaneous business, if that's all right?
Yeah. Cheryl, are we finishing? Okay, thank you. So let's move on to building and property maintenance. Anything, Chief, or Trustee Mariscal?
I have nothing.
Okay. We would be at economic and community development. Trustee Kazam?
Yeah, so this week, Peoria Heights resident Tanisha Kason approached both Mayor Phelan and myself, and she is interested in and will be organizing a voter registration event for the morning of September 5th. We'll have more information forthcoming, maybe hopefully even on our website, I think, Mayor, but I want to let you know that all representatives from all parties will be there to help anyone who is not already registered to vote to register appropriately, and we encourage everyone, all residents and citizens of the greater Peoria area, to come here. I think it's, it can be not just in Peoria Heights, if I'm correct in saying that, to come out and vote and become eligible and exercise the right that so many have fought for. Sorry, this may ask. Census 2020 is something else I want to talk about. We'd like to encourage everyone who is not already registered in the Census 2020 to do so. Some things I didn't know before now, as how important it is as an indicator for funding for our communities. Billions of dollars are allocated to states and communities based on our count, and so it's also mandated by the U.S. Constitution, and for the first time this year, you can respond online or by phone or mail. So the online address is my, M.Y., 2020census.gov if you want to do it online, and the telephone number is 844-330-2020. And then, of course, we all should have received in our mailboxes the postcard that indicates how to do that. Another update is that we have the next date for the Comprehensive Plan, September 6th at 6:00 p.m. The topic of the meeting will be parks, open spaces, and environmental features, and I wanted to just remind everyone who cannot, is not logging on from their home, if they have difficulty logging on at home, you can come to Village Hall, and Chris has set it up so that people can participate from this location, so that's actually another way to have great communication and dialogue if you don't want to do it from your home. And lastly, today, I've attended a few meetings for a potential trailhead in Peoria Heights. We're working with Peoria Park District, the Illinois Municipal League, and another small group of people to try to secure a location for a trailhead in Peoria Heights, so I'll give you more information as I learn it.
Okay, thank you.
I have one. When is that, September 6th?
September, I have to write everything down. September 10th at 6:00 p.m. 10, okay. Thank you, sure.
Trustee Kazam, is that here at Village Hall?
The meeting?
Yeah.
It's going to be virtual again. They're continuing to do it virtual, but if residents or any of us don't want to do it from our own home, we can do it, we can come here to Village Hall, and Chris and Sarah have set up a way that we can communicate virtually with House Levine and Farnsworth, but from this location.
There were a few people here, six, eight people here in Village Hall for the last Anything else on economic development? Okay, let's move on to administration. Trustee Gett?
I don't have anything this time. With Chief Sutner has something to bring up.
Just a couple things, Trustee Gett. I'll be sending out to the Board this week a redlined version of the police union contract that we deferred after the first quarter, so after you review that, please, if you have any questions, reach out to me. We can go over it either over the phone or in person, and you also should have received the first quarter budget figures that I sent out, which was very good news, so if you have any questions on that, you can also contact me. That's all I have.
Okay, let's go on to fire then. Trustee Weisenberg?
Thanks, Mayor. I have nothing to report regarding the trustee report unless Chief Walters has something he'd like to report.
I do have one thing. The last time we met on that Saturday, I'd mentioned to you at the beginning of the meeting that thoughts and prayers to go out to Assistant Chief Don Faulkner, because he was ill at that time. I'm sad to report that he passed away the end of last week. If there's such a good thing, is he went home in good fashion. Your fire department stepped up and did exactly what the family required or requested, and he was sent home in a traditional firefighter fashion, and I can tell you, I'm very sad. It broke my heart. He was a great man. I don't know if you had the opportunity to know him. He was on this department for 63 years. The last 10, 15 years, there was not a lot he could do but be there, and he was there. And he brought the, brought joy to everybody when he would show up, so it's a big loss to us. I do thank the Mayor for being there at the visitation and at the funeral, so I just wanted to pass on, very sad news for the fire department. We're struggling with this, but I'm sure we'll get over it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Nothing more?
Okay, so we would be at police. Trustee DeBoer?
I do want to report that we have had some reports of a few car break-ins. Everything that we have gotten reported of has been vehicles that are left unlocked. There's been no physical damage, it's just been kind of like an opportunistic crime, walking around checking door handles, so if you are someone who does not want to lock your car doors, please make sure you take all your belongings out of them, but I mean, the optimum response would be that everyone could lock their doors and help cut down on this sort of crime that we're having. And then I don't know, Chief Sutner has anything to add?
I would just like to add to that, that, you know, we did make arrests today on individuals going through vehicles, as Trustee DeBoer stated, but this is an ongoing trend. We kind of know what group is involved with this, but if you could help us help you, and that's like Trustee DeBoer stated, remove your belongings, lock your doors. It's something that every law enforcement agency is dealing with in the tri-county area, so it's just not a Peoria Heights issue, so I think that's, you know, we're working on some signage to get out there that Trustee Weisenberg and I talked about today, give some tips, lock your vehicles, remove your belongings, but if you do, and the other thing I'd like to urge, you've heard me say this before, is get involved. If you see something or somebody doesn't fit the area, you're not bothering us, we'd rather get a call, and it'd be nothing than find out later it was somebody we were looking for. So again, use a non-emergency number, give us a call, we'll check it out, but again, we did make some arrests today on those burglaries, so.
Nothing else?
Any questions? All right, let's move on to old business. Any old business come for the Board? Hearing none, we'll get right into new business. The first item of business is approval to update software for a fuel system in the amount of $3,100. Trustee Carter, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
I'm making a motion to update the software for the fuel system.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Trustee Carter.
Okay, so from what I know, what we have down there now is probably 15, 20 years old, if not older, so it's time to upgrade it, get it up to speed. It's just a computer software to give us reports of who's getting gas.
Right, so it's important to have accountability, and to see if the dial-up network is done more half the time, so this is going to go off the Wi-Fi, internet stuff, it's just like you said, 15, 20 years old.
Yeah.
It'll be a lot better for Stephanie to be accurately keeping the reports.
And it's for $3,100. Does that come out, what does that come out of? Does that come out of the street, or how does that come, half and half?
It's typically out of street. They have a software line. If there's not sufficient funds there, then it will be broken up because everyone's using it.
Yeah.
Any discussion? Anything you want to add, Mike?
No, that's pretty much it.
Okay, all right, if you're ready for the question, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
Trustee DeBoer.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is approval of voluntary collection agreement for the Village of Peoria Heights, Illinois, hotel or motel occupancy tax. Trustee Gett, I'd ask for a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the voluntary collection.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Trustee Gett.
Hey, Mark, you want to take care of this, because I've never heard of voluntary.
I would be happy to. I would be happy to. It's a voluntary collection agreement because Airbnb, if you understand their role, they don't own the property, and they don't represent the renter. The tax, our hotel motel tax, which does apply to these Airbnb rentals, whether it's an apartment, a house, a condo, whatever type of property it is, when you put it on the Airbnb site and you pay Airbnb for the right to do that, what this voluntary agreement is, they're saying, we're not obligated to do this, but we will agree to collect the tax. It's not our responsibility, it's the owner's responsibility and the renter, but since we facilitate and help collect payment for the owner from the renter, it's, we're in a position to collect the tax for you, and this is just Airbnb's way of avoiding getting sued by municipalities for people that list their properties on Airbnb and they don't collect. They need to track all the municipalities that have taxes, and that they, you know, if they enter an actual agreement, then they program it into their software that when you rent a place in Peoria Heights, they collect the 5%. So it's really just a way to get them into the system. This actually came from Azivar, our consultant, which is why we tweaked the hotel motel tax ordinance at last month's meeting, so that it fit within these parameters of what Airbnb sees. So now, their algorithm, their software, for anybody that rents any place through Airbnb in Peoria Heights, they're going to add the 5% on, and they're going to pay us the 5%.
Thank you, good explanation.
Yep.
Any questions?
I do have one. Mark, do we have to do this for VRBO, too?
We should, and I'm going to ask Azivar about that. I don't know if they're as cooperative with municipalities as Airbnb is.
Okay.
I know that Airbnb does this because they've been sued by, you know, Peoria Heights wouldn't be a big issue for them, but Chicago would.
Yeah.
Where there's tens of thousands of rentals every day, and they really are not liable for the tax, but they would rather have it programmed into their system and collect it, because they're already collecting the nightly or weekly rate.
Right.
From the renter, so it's easy for them to do that, but this way, they can tell the person who's listing the property, hey, by the way, you're in a 5% hotel tax municipality, any rentals that we do, we're going to collect an extra 5% to remit to the Village. So yeah, VRBO, I'll check with Azivar and see, you know, if any, there's other platforms too that are smaller, you know, aren't as popular, but I'll check and see if they do the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
Question for you, Mark. That 5% is the average that most cities charge?
It's pretty much the norm, I would say, and not necessarily the average, it's almost the rule.
The norm. Do they charge us a fee to collect that tax?
No.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
Trustee DeBoer.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is approval of a donation to the Lions Club in the amount of $500. Trustee Gett, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a $500 donation to the Lions Club.
And a second?
Second.
All right, go ahead, Trustee Gett.
Are they here? Anybody from the Lions Club?
Mark.
Okay, so what is, we are donating this $500 to help them with some, I guess, expenses, I guess.
For the, was it for the playground?
Does this have to do for the structure?
Playground, yeah.
Okay.
Well, at the last board meeting, you know, the board member requested, there's a threshold they needed to raise so they could apply for certain grants, and I think that that's where this number came from. They were $500 short, so we discussed kind of closing that gap so they could move forward with some grants to get some nicer equipment, so I think that's why we arrived at that number.
Yep. Just to go towards the request by Mrs. Slank. Any discussion?
Yeah, so the Lions Park, that's village property, isn't it? Right, so we're kind of just donating to ourselves.
That's a good, very good point. Anyone else?
Yeah.
I never thought of it that way, so that's very good, interesting, good point.
How much money is needed for your, for the whole playground equipment? Do you have, know that answer?
We do not have that number.
Okay.
But the $1,000 was needed as an initial investment for the grant, correct?
Yeah.
I'm not up on the grant information, sorry. That's just Slank's.
I think that's what it was, yeah.
Yeah, I'm remembering now.
Any other discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Gett. Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next is appointment of a treasurer. Due to a resignation, we have had a vacancy in the Office of Treasurer for some time. Emily Smazrout on our staff here has been filling in on an interim basis, and I want to congratulate her on doing a terrific job. But tonight I'm placing the name of Bart Cumming in for your consideration as village treasurer. I think most everyone knows Bart, the board has been emailed his resume. Bart's a former member of the village board and a local businessperson, but more importantly, I think is his financial background as an auditor and as a CPA. So I think that will be a very important fit as a, as a new set of eyes and ears that's examining the village's finances on a monthly basis. So I would ask for a motion to appoint Bart Cumming as treasurer.
I make a motion to appoint Bart Cumming as treasurer.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the nomination? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazan?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, all that passes. Next is discussion of Fire Department. Trustee Weisenberg, anything you want to bring up tonight? You've asked that this be placed on the agenda on a monthly basis.
Sure, sure. First, I'd like to thank Chief Sutton and Chief Walters for all the work that you two have done getting all the data to this board. I know it took a lot of crunching and working with Peoria and working with the Fire Department, Greg. We've had discussions with citizens, we've heard from Chief Walters, we've heard the proposal from Peoria, we've got a lot of work ahead of us. Tonight I would really like to see us narrow our focus and agree on which direction we'd like to go, at least so we can get it to an action item on the, on the board. I'd like for us to focus on our immediate need, which initially was the daytime availability with Greg Walters' retirement. Last meeting we discussed possibly hiring a chief that would help in the interim while we worked towards planning for the growing needs of the Village of Peoria Heights. I would encourage my fellow trustees to support Chief Walters' recommendation. We should hire a chief and start working towards, like I said, the growing needs of the Village of Peoria Heights. So I wasn't sure if anyone else had a opportunity to look over the numbers that Chief Sutton had sent over and if there was any other questions or that you had for Chief Walters or regarding the Peoria numbers or anything.
I did have a question. So the last meeting that we had, we were offered from the city of Peoria, an amount which has now gone down to $159?
153.
153 a year for 24/7. Would that contract be for a year or how long, do you know how long they would do that contract for?
That has not been negotiated. I would imagine if that's the direction the board goes, that would be a long-term contract, but we have not, I have not discussed any length of terms with the administration.
Okay, so from my understanding, it, it's, it would be 24/7, they would not be housed here, and then they would also respond to cardiac arrest calls, is that correct?
Correct. That number at 153 annually, 153,000 annually would, would be all fire calls, accidents, only on EMS side would be cardiac arrests.
Okay.
Correct.
And if we hired, are you talking a full-time chief? A part-time chief?
I think, I think last time we discussed both the possibility of a part-time and a full-time chief, and I believe Chief Sutton provided the numbers for both. If these numbers are correct, Chief Sutton, correct me. But for the full-time chief, salary, taxes, pension, it came out to 11082.
11092?
110, 820. 1,000, 110,820.
Okay.
Part-time, 55,410. Does that sound right, Chief Sutton?
55,000.
410.
Then there would be no, that's without the duty crew?
That's without the duty crew.
So that's just a full-time chief?
Right.
And, or part-time chief, whichever we would decide.
Correct.
And then the, the rest of the department would be volunteers? Am I right?
Initially, yeah. I know there were some concerns about the cost of the duty crew. So speaking with Chief Walters, you know, our immediate need is daytime availability. So if we were to hire the full-time chief, then we could fill that need and then plan towards a duty crew as the developments in the Heights happen and that revenue starts coming in.
Okay, so if we did go, I mean, I almost think that if we go that route, if you're going to hire a fire chief, it probably should be full-time. I mean, you, we don't really have any, any other volunteers, do we, that are available during the day?
That, that's when our manpower is the weakest, and Chief Walters could probably give us a better idea of the daytime availability. But that is where it's the weakest. Most of our volunteers have families and have full-time jobs. So having a-
So if we went part-time, would we have anyone to cover the other hours if that's what we did, if we went a part-time chief?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, so it's almost, we, that's really kind of, unless you do the duty crew.
Right.
That's kind of off the table.
Right, correct. Ideally, the full-time position would strengthen our daytime availa, daytime availability.
Which is what Chief Walters basically has been doing as a full-time chief.
Done now, right, yeah. And I know we, we'd had some discussions too, that possibly a full-time chief could do other things like start a high school program for getting our youth interested in volunteering with the Fire Department. So there's been some ideas that floated around, but the immediate concern, as we all know, is the daytime availability.
Chief Walters, how many calls do you go, like, outside of your, what's considered full-time hours during the week? So besides what you do during the week as full-time hours, Monday through Friday, are you also taking a lot of calls in the evening? Are you responding to those and on the weekends?
I do. I'm a volunteer fire chief. I don't, obviously, you know, I don't get paid for doing this.
Right.
But during the daytime, and I think that's how I was given that information originally, is I'm retired, I'm available, and I'm responsible. We get a call during the daytime. There are days that I have three or four guys available because of their shifts. There are other days I don't have anybody close available. If we have a fire, they're leaving work to come here. So, and I also cover calls at nighttime. That's a responsibility issue, it kind of comes with the territory. Did that, did that answer your question?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
Because what I'm wondering then, Brandon or Chief Sutton, what happens then if we have, if we have a full-time paid chief that's not a volunteer? And would he go on these after-hours or weekend calls or, and then how do, how are we compensating him for that? Is that falling to overtime? Or is that just part of a salary agreement that he has to do so many hours?
Can I answer that?
I think it's all negotiable, it depends on the-
It is.
-job description we write for the job.
But ideal situation is he'd be salaried.
Right.
Okay, he's salaried. So he would be able to respond, there's no overtime for a salaried individual, knowing upfront that he's got response requirements after his normal 40-hour week or after his normal eight-hour day would be all part of the interview process. Got to have that cohesion, you know, just because the guy's here eight hours a day, but he's not at nighttime is not going to allow him to bond with his firefighters, if that makes sense. And I do, you know, that is something I think is critical. And I also think whoever the fire chief is needs to live in the Village of Peoria Heights, simply because of the requirement of response. Not only is he going to be the individual, my vision, the individual that's going to do the day-to-day work of the Fire Department, scheduling, so on and so forth, but he's also going to be the primary trainer. He's also going to be the incident commander at any incident that he's available. Sure, he's going to need time off, and that, that'll be worked in, I'm sure, as this goes through it, but having somebody there as the incident commander, that, that focal point that the firefighters can point to, which is where I'm at right now. I mean, my guys come to me for a little bit of everything, and I make it a point in my life to respond to these calls. My family was grown up in that, they understand it, and whoever gets the job, and I agree 100% full-time position, 40-hour week, I will have to fill that, that slot.
So when you take a vacation, like a two-week vacation, who normally would cover you then?
Well, usually Chief Wu does, but I've got, I've got three other, or two other chiefs now. Bobby Hill did it, a couple other chiefs that I've got, whenever I'm leaving, I let them know in advance that I'm going to be gone, and if they're working, then they work it out, and they've done that successfully. They're able to work it out where they would cover the time I was gone. And we really didn't have any hiccups there. There are times, though, however, when somebody's sick, you just kind of, kind of go with the flow a little bit.
And how do you feel, Chief Walters, about the amount of volunteers we have?
Oh, I could always go for more. I, I mean, right now, we're, we have enough volunteers on our roster right now to handle our incidents. I would love to go up to 36. We were 36 two and a half years ago. That was very fleeting. That lasted probably about two weeks. You know, life happens. They get on the Fire Department, they get trained, and they got to move on. Some of them got hired by paid departments, which I think is a great, we're a springboard for them, to get them into a career, but I think we're okay right now, but not during the daytime. That's the whole issue here. You know, during the daytime, because as Trustee Weisenberg said, during the daytime they have families, they have, they work during the daytime, a lot of them do. When they're, when they're off work, they're available. It's during the daytime where I took the crux of those calls. But I'm not always by myself. I could, case in point, if you don't mind, I'm kind of on my soapbox here. The other day when we had that bad storm came through here, it was in the afternoon. It was before second shift, it was like between 2:30 and 3 o'clock. Peoria Heights Fire Department got hit with eight calls back-to-back. We handled them all with our own personnel. We had enough, but it's because we sent out a blurb beforehand on the phone saying, hey, if you're available, come up, we got bad weather coming. We got hit with that bad weather and we got eight different types of calls within 45 minutes. And we were able to respond in a timely manner with our own personnel, we did not have to reach out, we had nobody waiting. So that's kind of how it goes. It ebbs and it flows. Well, it was ebbing that day, that was a good thing.
Yeah, that was not a good day. Okay, so my last question is, is that if we did go with the full-time chief, that's, let's just round it up and say 111,000, is that, that's including benefits and every, that's the whole benefit package from what I remember looking at? I don't have it with me.
Yeah, I have it right here, yeah. It included payroll taxes, pension, health insurance, unemployment, sick leave.
Okay. But we also have their budget, correct? Which is around 261?
265,000.
265,000 is the budget for the Fire Department? So we're looking at what, 375, 375,000? Plus the equipment, right? Does that include the maintenance on the equipment? Yep, the payments?
The budget does.
That's then the budget, within that budget, the 265, right. Maintenance comes out of that.
Okay.
It doesn't include the debt service payment, but it does include the budget, everywhere, the maintenance.
For the maintenance, okay.
You said it does not include the debt service?
Payment.
Do you have any idea about what that is, Stephanie?
It's just, just under, I think it's 485,000 debt service.
Uh, total, yeah, yearly, it's around $50,000 a year.
Total, I mean.
Yeah, no, total, yes, you've got that correct.
485 total.
Okay. But we pay, we, the, the payments that we make are in that 265 budget, right? That's just maintenance in there, right? That doesn't include the payment? That's making the payment to the equipment.
Does that come out of their budget, Stephanie?
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does.
Okay. So, so I guess my thing, this is just, this is me thinking out loud, so if you want, you know, different opinions and things we can talk about, I guess what I'm looking at, of course, is, you know, the bottom line money-wise here, but is that what everyone else is looking at? I know that this Fire Department is very, very beloved by this community. And budget-wise, do we have another 111,000 to put into this, to do this? I, I think I'm going to have to, I personally am going to have to take another look at the numbers just to see, because that's a pretty big difference between what Peoria's going to pay, or what we would pay Peoria, and then, of course, what we pay the Heights. Now, I know that there's a lot of other services that you guys provide to this community, because I've, I've been watching it on Facebook and what, all the wonderful things people have to say about you guys and all the nice things that you do for them. So I think you're going to lose that part of it, obviously, if we go with this. So are we going to go, I guess it's, do we follow our heart or do we follow our head here? You know, as far as financially, can we afford this?
Right, so just to touch-
So I guess I'm just interested in what everybody else thinks about the financial part of it. Can we go this route?
Right, we're all aware of the challenges with the COVID-19 pandemic. I believe a, a financial report that Stephanie recently sent out that said that our finances were typi, were on par so far with what they were last year. We finished this first quarter with a $100,000 surplus?
We did the first quarter. It should be noted that revenues were down and continue to be down. The sole reason that the village did finish the first quarter with a surplus is because of decreased spending.
I understand that.
Because of what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Decreased spending. Essentially, spending is down over all departments as the village is delaying or cutting projects.
You, you did state, I assume you prepared this report, but you had said that the village can anticipate higher than normal payments in the second quarter?
Yes.
So should improve?
Oh, no. Is that under the expenditure part?
That's under revenues.
Oh, so that should be on the income tax?
Yes.
Yes, so solely on the income tax.
Right.
State and home rule sales taxes and food and beverage, all sales tax are still down across the board. The income tax is up solely because the deadline for the payment date was moved from April into July, so what we saw was typically we would get a lot of money in April and May. Instead, we didn't, we saw that moved into July and now probably August. So it's not so much that we're going to be getting more money as we are going to be getting it at a different time.
No, I understand that. Also on that report, it says despite, despite the loss of revenues, the first quarter isn't too far off from the average.
That's correct.
So do you anticipate us finishing the year in a surplus?
I will not at this point in time even speculate.
Stephanie, what projects have we canceled doing?
So I know that Public Works is doing less seal coating and asphalting than I normally would do. Water is basically on a need-to-repair basis. Overtown is, overtime is down across the board. At this point, it would probably be easier for me to show you where things are up than where they are down, because it's pretty much just across the board. Anything that does not need to be purchased is not purchased. So that does create a situation which is essentially what we've been in before a while of, at some point, we're going to have to catch back up on those projects.
Can I clarify one thing? That $110,000 we're talking about is for an annual expense? You would have to, because it would start November till May, so, or April, I'm sorry. So you're cutting that by 50%. So instead of being $110,000 that we'd have to spend, it would be 55.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Good point.
Yeah. So it reduces the original expense.
So I have a question. If we entertain this idea of hiring a full-time fire chief, will we, and I think the Chief Walters already said this, there will be an interview process- there will be an interview process, and this would be a posted position?
Yes.
And will we have more... I don't want to say oversight necessarily that this board would oversee it, but requirements for the recruitment of volunteers and their education? As far as like different standards and that types of things?
For the fire chief's position or for the firefighter?
No, for the volunteers.
The volunteers are well-trained now.
OK.
The training that they have right now meets what Peoria's standards are, meets what's across the state.
OK. And I know I'm jumping. I'm writing...
No, no, it's fine.
Because we're all talking. Also, raising money and requirements of fundraising and that type of thing. Would that be something?
That would be something definitely the new chief would have to look into.
OK.
Any way to, you know, generate funds would be good. Plus, reaching out... One of his primary jobs would be reaching out and getting volunteers, which he'll have, hopefully, have some time to do. But there's a laundry list. I know when I sat down with the mayor and with Dustin, a laundry list of requirements that I felt that a paid chief would need to do. Number one, because of his availability or her availability during the day. Things that we've attempted to try over the years, but with lack of personnel, weren't able to do it. That would make the village, the community safer, would make the businesses safer. And I'm in a position where I could train those individuals to do that. And I would offer that service to the fire chief at that point to get them trained, which would be business inspections, pre-fire plans. Obviously, you know, those are some of the things that we would like to have done in the past, but we weren't able to do it due to manpower.
So that was asked... Actually led me to the next question because I understand, maybe I'm incorrect, but with you, Chief Walters, you are an educator in fire, and we have been able to educate. I mean, we haven't necessarily had to pay for that service.
No, you have not.
So going forward, we would... That would be something... Another cost that we would incur as well?
Well, not necessarily. If you've got someone that you hire as a chief that has a similar qualification than I do, they can continue doing that.
OK.
So...
Because the chief could get certified in whatever, and then they can train below them. It's not right?
Well, they have to be trained as a fire service instructor through the Office of State Fire Marshal. And any training that they have after that, they can pass on. They can train and sign off on it. The more in-depth class it is, the higher of an instructor they have to be. It goes Instructor 1, Instructor 2, and Instructor 3. And these are certified classes through the Office of State Fire Marshal.
Also, if we entertain this possibility, would we or the mayor and/or be able to look at this budget, or Stephanie, and really think if there are other places to cut spending to put that money toward the salary of a full-time fire chief?
All spending and approval of all budgets are subject to the trustee's approval annually. So yes to that question.
Now, I think, my personal view? I think going to a full-time fire chief is definitely the move in the right direction. And I said that originally. Going to a duty crew, maybe later on down the road, when the need arises. The need is not here yet. The buildings are not being built. When they're being built, when they're about to be occupied, that's when the need surfaces. OK?
I mean, I agree. I mean, I think... My opinion also is I would lean more towards a full-time chief right now. Let's... And I do... I think Chief Sutton and the mayor are looking at the job description right now. I think with... Is his name Eric?
Yeah.
The HR person?
That's correct.
Thank you, Trustee Carter. If I may just jump in. So I've asked Chief Sutton to start preparing job descriptions for both chief and firefighters and getting ready to advertise those positions. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, you're fine. You're fine. So I... That's where I'm... That's where I've always leaned towards, is let's get a full-time fire chief. We've got to figure out a way to rearrange the numbers and get it in the budget for now. We have six months, seven months before our next budget, I think, until May, that we can figure out, do we need to add a duty crew? Or is the fire chief able to get enough volunteers and handle what he needs to handle and handle the goals that he needs to go? That would be...
Definitely a step in the right direction.
Not necessarily that you have to hire him at $80,000. I mean, let's see what the job description is and see what we can get somebody in here. I mean, that's kind of... To me, that seems kind of steep.
$80,000 salary is the mean in the state of Illinois.
But that's the state of Illinois. But what is it like for a village our size?
That incorporates that as well.
I get $80,000 for a village of, what are we, 6,500? Or I can go to City of Peoria that has 300,000 and still get 80,000? That, to me, is just... There's got to be like a pay scale of, I would think, the size of the village, I would think.
I would think it'd be not only the size of the village, but the size of the workload. OK? You're not going to find a lot of people that are going to step up for less than $80,000 to this type of job. Truly, you're not.
I know. I hear what you're saying, but I still think that we should investigate that part. That part, to me, still seems kind of steep. But anyways, even if it is 80,000, I'm still going that route to full-time fire chief. I'm not... I just can't... I mean, I know we got the thing for City of Peoria, and I thank City of Peoria and Chief Sutton for doing all the work to get the proposal and let us see what the true dollars amount are because we needed to see it. But in the back of my mind, I just... For some reason, I cannot let Peoria step foot in here because we got our own community, we've got it going good. We need to keep it our community and not let Peoria in. But my opinion is I think full-time chief.
I agree with you, Trustee Carter. I think hiring a full-time chief to start off. And eventually, we're going to have to get a duty crew. We've got a lot of things happening here in the Heights. We've got hotels going to be put up. When that's... Most chances for... And back me up on this, chief. For an incident is when that thing's opened up and they're still... And they're in the process of building it. I mean, chances are going to be less once it gets completed. But we're going to have to... This is growing pains for the village. And eventually, with everything that's going on, we're going to definitely need a duty crew. And you never know, down the road, we're going to start looking at our... See how things go with our... What we're expecting for revenue to come from these developments. You never know, down the road, we might need a full-time 24/7 fire department because we got hotels going up, we got a lot of departments. We can't just handle it with just one guy and the...
Al fresco.
Al fresco. I think... I don't know where we're going with the money, but we're going to have to look for the future. And it's baby steps and, you know... We're just going to have to start planning for the future and lay the groundwork for the future boards to be able to figure this out.
Well, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. The... This board asked me to gather data from both angles, whether it be the options with Peoria or also the in-house options. I continue to do that. You know, this... I guess the question for me for the board is that in a perfect world, you're exactly right. We would have an in-house crew. We would have a paid fire chief. But we have to decide how we're going to pay for that. Paying for a part-time fire chief would not be out of the realm right now. And with, as Chief Walters stated, where we are in our budget year, that's something we could probably do. But at next year, it will be obviously the full amount. And at that time, it might show the need that we do need a duty crew. I submitted the numbers to you. You know what that is on top of that budget. I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but I think we need to start thinking of how we're going to pay for that. That's my job. That is a large number, whether it be a public safety tax or anything like that that we're going to have to try to impose to offset that cost to have it in-house. I don't know what the answer is. And I'm willing to try everything. That's why I'm also running parallel with Peoria's numbers is I'm currently getting job descriptions for the fire chief and also for the firefighters and what those qualifications will look like and ready to post and advertise and take applications. So I'm running parallel to the city's numbers. And I agree with Trustee Carter and also Trustee Mariscal is that when you do look at the numbers, it is a no-brainer when you're comparing dollars. But what you do lose is the nostalgia, the local control. I get all that, I do. And I'm willing to try whatever this board wants to try. It's my job. But I think that come the end of this fiscal year, I think that we're going to be faced with some decisions on how we're going to pay for this service. You know, I see Chief... I've watched Chief Walters daily go to these calls. Obviously, with him out of the mix, it does concern me. That's why we've started this discussion. That is a huge loss to that fire department, not only as a leader, but is the amount of calls he responds to, it's a huge loss. We have to find out how we're going to fill that gap. And I think that we need to start bottlenecking these options moving forward and make a decision, but not lose track of how we're going to pay for this. Trustee Gett, like you just mentioned, in a... If we get to a point where we do have to hire employees, that's got to come from somewhere. And we do not have that money. You don't have to go back too long. We dug out of a million-dollar deficit. And we're in a lot better shape than most right now, especially going through the COVID era. But again, I don't want to get to a point where we start chipping away at reserves. So I think that we need to really narrow down and decide what we want to try first and not kick the can down the road. And again, I want to comment that this isn't a Peoria Heights issue. This is a national issue when it comes to volunteerism. So everybody's dealing with this. And there's all kinds of different models, hybrid models, part-time, full-time. But that's my piece. And, you know, I think moving forward, we need to narrow down our options and decide what this board wants to do, so.
Just touching real quickly, Trustee Carter, on the salary. I assume that this employee would be an exempt employee, so he or she would not be eligible for overtime. So while the $80,000 does seem high, they're going to be working a lot of overtime, if you will, and not being compensated for it. So it does kind of wash. Or if you paid them less and they weren't an exempt employee...
Well, they're chief of the fire department. It's kind of goes with the road, you know? Right, chief? You're responsible for all of it. You got to show up. You don't punch a clock, 8 to 9 to 5 or whatever. You're available whenever there's trouble, so.
I'd still like to... Is there a way that maybe we could get like what a town our size, what a chief would make? Or is that not...
No, that's common. We could do comparables.
To see? Exactly. I'd be... I'm just curious. If it's something that we can look up?
No, I can...
I mean, I don't mind looking it up.
It's something I can do.
OK. Thank you.
For less than $80,000, how many people are going to want to uproot and come to the village of Peoria Heights for anything less than $80,000? It's just my opinion. OK? I mean, I looked at the numbers. I looked at across the board, nationally, across the state of Illinois, and found out what the average was. And that takes into consideration relocation, moving into a new community, getting to know your department, all that kind of stuff. There were a lot of guys, a lot that would not respond to anything less than $80,000 because it's now a career form.
I get that. But I also get that we're a small village and we're not as... I don't want to say not as busy. I don't want... Don't come across that. But like, I don't know. I... To me, it just seems kind of high. And I'm for a town, a village of us. I think you might be surprised.
If you're in...
Because if you're a true firefighter and you love it, maybe it's somebody that wants to do it and don't have as many calls. You see what I'm saying? That, yeah, they'll take it and...
A department head should be very close to what the other department heads in their community were. That way, they work together. There's no infighting, anything of that nature.
I hear what you're saying, but I don't... I don't agree.
I know it's a hard pill to swallow. The price. But at the same time, we're doing all this work to create a more vibrant community, too. So we have to... What we are today isn't what we hope to be a year from now, two years, three years from now. And so I know it's a... That's why this is so difficult. It's a very big number.
It might be, and by May comes here, we might not even be hiring a... That full-time or part-time, whatever, might not even be feasible by May. We just don't know. We're just trial and error, I guess.
Well, I think you... I agree with you, Trustee Carter. One way to test the market is to maybe advertise for the position and see what we get.
Yeah.
True.
I mean, you can always negotiate. Start low. You know? You could put 80 on there, and they could come in and say they want 100. You know? I don't know. I just think it's something we need to really... Everybody really needs to look at these numbers and see, like Chief Sutton said, where are we going to get the money for this?
I got to say, I was a little surprised. I hadn't heard that $153,000 figure from the city. Last I heard was 205. I don't know what they could have reduced. That was a little shock to me.
What the number was, chief, was their original quote they had, if a battalion chief was needed, it was $100. But the figure they presented to us, they had put $1,000.
Too many of those.
So there was a discrepancy between the administrator and the fire chief, and that's what was caught and discussed. And there was... That's why that was corrected, so.
All right. Just the only thing I... Obviously, I'm not going to swallow either one of those pills because you get a reduction in service. The 205 or the 153 is a reduction in service to the village of Peoria Heights. And I will not stand for that. I will, you know... Whether I'm retired or not, our guys work hard to give as much service to this community as they can. And hopefully, you will not, because of the cost, reduce the services your firefighters provide, that they willingly provide right now at no cost. And I think your citizens deserve that. And keep that up here when you're thinking. When you're looking at the numbers on there, it's not just numbers. OK?
Anyone else on this matter tonight? I think we've had a... Yeah, Mary, let me just finish up and just say, I think we had a good discussion. And Dustin and I are looking for direction from all of you. I know this is not an easy decision, so you need to take your time and gather information. A lot of you are still doing that. So when you're ready, we'll put things on the agenda when you're at that point. Mary, you want to have a...
I just wanted to run away because you may have to answer this. First of all, thanks for... Well, you need my address? Mary Bear, 5016 Clarendon, Peoria Heights, Illinois. First, and thanks for letting me add my two cents' worth after the open, you know, audience. Anyway, first and foremost, and I know Chief Sutton and the rest of you, safety has to be our first concern. My concern with Peoria is they can tell you all kinds of stuff, but can they provide it? You're looking at a fire station in Wisconsin, I'm assuming, and you're looking at the one down in northeast Adams would be their first responding stations, correct? What happens if both of those stations have a call at the same time at the other direction? Then what are you looking at? Pioneer Park?
1516s.
Which is Pioneer Park?
Pioneer Parkway and Northmore.
Or Monroe, the main station out of Peoria. That's not been addressed. Granted, looking at the $153,000, it would be a no-brainer. You also got to look at it like Chief Sutton said. If you don't get a 10- or a 15-year contract, if you only get a two-year, what's going to... You know what's going to happen after that two years? They're going to... Yeah. They're going to jack it way up. You already almost still owe $500,000 on that equipment. owe five hundred thousand dollars on that equipment. You're not gonna be able to get any money out of that equipment if you try to sell it. And once you give it up, you never get it back. So that's just something to think about when you're looking at Peoria. I don't want anything to do with Peoria and who's to say, when it gets to the city council, Peoria doesn't say, hey, we can't take care of our own people. Why are we getting involved in the Heights? And then you're back to square one.
Thank you, Mary. Any other quick questions or comments from anyone out there?
I know this had been brought, that was the second time I've heard that, but, so that would go up in front of their city council to vote of whether they would, would cover us in, in for this fire?
Correct.
Okay.
And if, if I may, there are lots of moving targets here on both, both of these proposals. I, I think again, to keep in mind on, on that side of the equation, that this is just a quote and there's probably room for negotiations on, on lots of things on, on their part. But again, we need, uh, direction from the board on which, we're, right now, we're pairing, we're preparing parallel, um, proposals. So we'll be ready for whatever the board chooses. Um, but we'd, we'd like a little bit more direction at some point after you think this over, what, what's your preferred option and then we can drill down a little deeper.
Yeah, and I would just like to remind everyone, November is coming really quickly. Um, and you know, if we decide to go to the fire chief direction, uh, you know, we've gotta get that, we've gotta get advertised, which is gonna take time. We've gotta get it, uh, interviewed. We've gotta get the person in here to train with Chief Walters. So when you add all that together, we do not have a lot of, a lot of time to, you know, juggle this thing around. We really need to narrow our focus, um, because we do have a lot of work to do.
And I, I know, I just say in closing, I know, you gotta figure out where this money's coming from, but we're gonna spend the money. I just didn't spend the money on somebody here in the Heights. Let's do Peoria Heights employment instead of funding Peoria's. I mean, of course, I'm, I'm speaking from the heart too because I wanna keep it Peoria Heights Fire Department. I might be shooting this for, grassing for rainbows and everything, but, you know, grew up in the Heights, volunteer fire department, lots of good stuff happened here. We had the festivals and stuff. Well, that's volunteerism at its best. Well, it's getting kinda tough and like I said, we got a lot of development going on here in the Heights and we gotta protect it. And I didn't even think about the fact that if Wisconsin and the, what other firehouse was that?
Adams.
Adams. If they were both going in different directions, well, I try to Pioneer Park every day. That's fifteen minutes one way. I mean, of course, they're gonna have sirens and hopefully people get out of their way. But if we're gonna spend the money, I just didn't keep it here in the Heights, if possible. I mean, we gotta, we're gonna have to, you know, really look hard at it, but I'd like to try and keep it in the Heights if, at all possible, anyway, at all. But that, that's all I gotta say.
I have, I have a question. How much did we pay for the Housel Levine study? Does any of you remember?
Around ninety thousand, I think.
Right, ninety, ninety-eight.
Or ninety-eight? Ninety-eight thousand. And did we receive any grant? I can't, I'm sorry, just can't remember off the top of my head. Did we receive grants for any of that?
We did in the past. I don't think on this particular, did we, Stephanie?
We didn't receive any grant, but it will be partially funded by some of the special funding. So TIF funding, it's eligible for TIF funding, it's eligible for BDD funding.
I was gonna ask a question. Where did it come, where did we figure that out?
Yes. So it's not, I don't have the exact percentages, but I can get those to you tomorrow. I've got them in my email.
If you could, that would be great.
I would love to.
Okay, so trustee Weisenberg, um, I'm open to, uh, if we wanna have another Saturday session in the future, another, uh, special meeting, just let me know. So if you keep, keep me updated on what you wanna, how you wanna move forward.
Okay.
Anyone else on this? Okay, we'll be miscellaneous. Any miscellaneous to come for the board?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Go ahead.
Miscellaneous?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Uh, yeah, I, I received a letter from, uh, a message from a citizen in Peoria Heights regarding the, the Lake Avenue, um, construction. And he wanted me to read this off just real quickly for the board and I have some questions after that. But, um, this is from Mr. Raymond Lock, Lockhart. Uh, when is the Village of Peoria Heights going to tell the City of Peoria and PIPCO that we are not set up to be a detour route? Our streets, especially Toyota, are crowded with passenger vehicles who do not follow speed limits. Um, one morning around nine-thirty, uh, I almost got hit by a city bus who was turning left off Indiana onto Toyota. Our streets are not built for this and will soon begin to share, show wear and tear and our tax dollars will have to repair them. This construction has been going on all summer and time, um, to end the game. Um, and that, that's frustration that's been shared by most residents along that route. Uh, my question to the board and to, uh, the village is, do we have some kind of approval process before we detour streets or before Peoria shuts down one of their streets? Don't they have to come to us and say, hey, we're gonna be throwing all this traffic through your neighborhoods?
Well, there's a common courtesy and a degree of professionalism, but I'll let council take that question about the legalities.
Yeah, um...
Because that's a lot of traffic through a residential neighborhood.
It, it is and, you know, there's no law that says that they can't close down one of their streets if it's close to the boundary of another municipality. But the law of, you know, what goes around, comes around dictates that if they want us to not shut down Lake Avenue and reroute traffic through, um, you know, then you gotta be a good neighbor. I mean, it's just, you know, like your mom said, everything you needed to know, you learned in kindergarten. Um, and that's, applies here. So no, there's no requirement that they do that, that they contact us in advance, that they schedule or, you know, ask us for input on how they're gonna route traffic. But the same is true with Peoria. We don't have to, you know, now. I would think that if we were gonna do something like that, I, I, I know Mike well enough to know that he would contact his counterpart and, and the City of Peoria Public Works Department to at least let them know it's coming. Um, unfortunately, there's no rules that say they have to do that.
It seems to be though that they keep kinda doing this, right? So like they, they did this...
The rusher down?
Well, I'm just saying like they just kinda do things on their own time. Like they had it dug up above the hill for how long? You know, when it wasn't until we complained, 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 did, they did something and now it's happening on Lake. So I guess I just don't understand why.
That's what makes it particularly frustrating. It's one, it's one thing if they did it and then they were expeditious about getting the construction completed.
Right.
But to shut down a street, reroute traffic, yeah, I, I share all of that frustration, but, um, not aware of any legal requirements that either prohibit them from doing that or require them to take any number of steps before they do.
I, I'm confident that after the dialogue we had with administration last week that we won't have this problem moving forward. I think we have the right people contacted. Uh, if there is something, I'm sure we'll, we will get a heads up on that. I think where we fell short before, it wasn't from a lack of effort from our, uh, department, it was just kinda fell through the cracks on their end. But I think we closed that gap last week and it started with, uh, phone call from the mayor, by me, council. I think we've, uh, we've bridged that gap. So I do think the communication will be much better when they need to close anything around us, uh, because we do have, we've had a handful of issues that were, uh, it was a huge inconvenience for our citizens, not to mention attacks, uh, on our manpower on the police side, uh, just an absolute bombarded with complaints, uh, from traffic speeding, blowing stop signs and those are, those are officers pulled off, other issues, you know, like, uh, you know, major crime, you know, and not that traffic isn't important, but it's, it was attacks on the police department. So I think we've closed that gap. So to answer your question, we have the right guy. Um, I think in the future, we will, we'll get a phone call, so.
Really, it, it shouldn't have to be this way, but our, both Dave and Mike had been trying to contact their public information officer and those, um, contacts went unanswered. And that is a poor reflection, I will say, on, on their organization. But once I got in contact with their CEO, then everything started to move much more quickly. He apologized. He wasn't aware of the delay in the work on that site, which had occurred both by the contractor they were using and their own crews. Once he became aware, then things starting to happen, sorry, to happen. But again, it, it's, it's, we shouldn't have to go to the top of the food chain on, on every, everything like that. But I, I think we all have learned a, a lesson and they have apologized and promised to get the road open on Wednesday. Well, hopefully they'll keep that promise. If they don't, then we'll be right back at their door.
I think, I think one of the problems is that, uh, you're building a mill with American Water, not City of Peoria, and most of their employees have no idea that they're near Peoria Heights or that they're, they're on the boundaries. Is that, uh, for instance, the, the Ford Park Drive last year, those guys up there had no idea that Ford Park Drive was Peoria Heights or that this park across it was the Heights. So I guess taking into consideration that, those people have no idea that they're close to Peoria Heights, you know, they, they think it's in Peoria. They have no idea whether, that's part of the problem.
Thank you, Dave. That's a good point.
So I assume that when American Water approaches the City of Peoria, there's some kind of approval to shut the road, possibly. If we could work with Peoria maybe to get a notification.
Sure, there's some kind of order, internal process, but I'm not sure what it is.
I just think it's common courtesy that they should let us know they're working outside our border. GTSB does when they dig in the village, are outside the village. Yes, they're there in some homes, so. I just don't know why they don't.
Okay, anyone else on miscellaneous? Madam Clerk, the treasurer's report.
All right. As of the end of July, there was three million, one hundred and twenty-nine-thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-nine cents in the village-controlled accounts. In the water-controlled accounts, there was one million, two hundred and fifty-one-thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-two cents.
Okay. So a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
I make a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
I'll second it.
And a second?
Second.
Any, any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, when you're ready, call the roll, please.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
Trustee DeBart.
Aye.
All right. And before I turn to trustee Gett, I wanna thank you all for a very good, thoughtful discussion and dialogue on a number of topics tonight, so I really appreciate that. Trustee Gett?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we're adjourned.